I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you be so kind as to do a roll call for us?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Here.
Mr. Denio? Mr. Severson? Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
I understand we have a report from the planning director, but not the planning director.
Good morning. Crystal Jacobson with the Placer County Planning Services Division, and I'm here today to give you an update on upcoming Planning Commission hearings and board hearings. The October 25th Planning Commission has been canceled, so you can note that. You will be meeting on November 8th. And tentatively scheduled for that hearing, we've got the Greyhawk II proposal. It's a rezone subdivision and conditional use permit in the Granite Bay area. Also, the enclave at Granite Bay, it's a subdivision modification. Gold Hill Gardens, it's a minor use permit. This is for a community center. And then, in addition to that, the zoning text amendment for single-room occupancy, which you heard at your last meeting, will be presented to you at the November 8th meeting. And finally, a modification for the North Star Highlands Phase Two. So that's for the November 8th Planning Commission. For upcoming board meetings, today, the 11th, we're having the Orchard at Penran, is being considered before the board. And for the October 23rd Board Hearing, that will be in Tahoe, that's at the Sugar Bowl location. And the items for SEDRA that will be considered that day are the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail Amendment to the North Tahoe Area General Plan, which I believe you heard, I think, at the last Tahoe, your last Tahoe meeting. So they will be bringing forward your recommendation to the board. And then also, the board will be considering a county code amendment regarding liquid petroleum gas. That's a building division proposal that's being brought forward. They will also receive an update on our Tahoe Community Plan Update Work Program. And then finally, they'll receive an update on the TRPA Regional Plan Update. On the day of that hearing, or the day after that hearing, the regional plan, the final regional plan in EIS will be out for review. So they will hear a report from staff, and then we'll be reviewing the final document. And I believe that the TRPA Governing Board will be taking, starting to take action or hearings beginning in November. And then finally, the November 6th Board Hearing tentative items for that, staff will be requesting direction on our Sheridan Community Plan Work Program. So we've been gearing up for that work program as part of the fiscal 2012-2013 year. So we'll be proposing a work program before the board and getting some direction on that. They will also be considering adoption of the farmworker zoning text amendment that was brought before you at the last commission hearing. And so we'll be forwarding your recommendation on to the board at that date. And then finally, they will receive, tentatively receive, an update on a green communities program, which is a greenhouse gas inventory that we've been working on in Planning Services. And so we have the, it's been a two-phase program. We finished one inventory on the county operations. And then the second inventory was on community-wide greenhouse gas inventory. And so we'll be reporting to the board with the results of those inventories. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. No? Great. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Now would be the time for anybody wanting to make public comment on items that are not on the agenda today. If you'd like to do so, now would be time to come up and do it. None? And 10:05, looks like we're there. We'll start with the amendment to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. Melanie?
Good morning. Okay, so this item was brought to the August 9th Planning Commission, and it was continued. The applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission consider providing a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for an approval of an amendment to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan to reconfigure the existing commercial and open space land use designations and to rezone, uh, rezone to reconfigure the neighborhood commercial and open space zoning and to change the neighborhood commercial zoning to general commercial. So the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of a 51-unit RV park with a general store on a five-acre portion of an approximately 30-acre property. At the previous hearing, the commission received a brief presentation from staff, and they heard comments from the applicant and from the community. And the concerns raised at the hearing included the site design, tree removal, screening from Interstate 80 and Musso Road, and the limitation of 180 days for the maximum stay. So after discussing these issues, the commission took action to continue the item so that staff could further analyze and then come back with more information. So one of the first issues that was brought up were the trees and the site screening. And it was requested of the applicant that he work with his engineer and with staff to make a determination as to whether or not a modification to the design of the project could minimize the amount of trees that would be removed. So this is a site constraints map that illustrates the constraints on the property. As you can see, there's ponds located here, there's existing vegetation, there's a bit more sloping topography here, and then there are septic systems or septic areas in these areas. So based on that, and just basically the topography of the property, this is, he could, he did do a minor redesign, and that is to this little curve right here. So he was able to reduce the number of trees from 69 to 54, but he could not make any real significant changes to the site design for, because of the constraints. The other issue that was brought up was screening. And this is an illustration of the planned screening on the property. There's existing screening, and then there is the proposed, and, sorry, my, oh, there we go. So, um, the applicant has decided to address the screening issue by adding some vegetation along Musso Road, which will include approximately 14, 15-gallon redwood and diodora trees. But then, in addition to this, he will be going through the design review process, and we'll have a design review agreement. And then, based on that, there will be further determinations made as to whether or not he needs more screening on the property. So he won't necessarily tap out at 40 trees. He may have to put in more or less, depending on what we, what we determine through the design review. I apologize, I need to skip a couple slides. And my thing isn't working very well. So based on the request to do a review of recreational vehicle parks in the area and state recreational vehicle parks, this is just a summary of the research that was conducted. And basically, for the state parks, and a lot of times it was based on the demand of the park, so sometimes it would be a seven-day limitation on stay. But generally, it was a 30-day maximum for the remaining state parks. And then, as you can see, for the private parks, the majority of them had no limitation. Though there were a few that ranged from 28, from, you know, three weeks or 28 days. And in some cases, that was a limitation because of the weather, basically. It would be in, you know, like Cisco Grove in this, with the snow. They can't, they can't allow for more than three weeks generally, or, excuse me, not much longer than, you know, the summer or whatever because of the, because of the snow. So, um, so these are just pictures of the site. And if you want to go, if you would like me to go in depth on anything in particular, I will. But I'd just like to follow up with our recommendation, which is that we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt our mitigated negative declaration and approve the conditional use permit, and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for the approval of the amendment to the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and a reason as depicted in Attachment D of the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go over any of the other slides if you'd like.
Question? Yeah, just, I guess one of the things I'm trying to distinguish between, when does a RV park become a trailer park? Or what's the difference between an RV park and a trailer park?
There's, there is a difference. And there's, it's, the difference is in the definition of, there's a couple things. But there's, the definition is different for a mobile home and for an RV park in our zoning ordinance. But one of the main issues is, or definitions, is that a recreational vehicle is mobile, and it has to be registered, and it has to meet the requirements for a recreational vehicle. Whereas a mobile home is generally pre-manufactured and then can be set up on-site. If you'd like, I can read the definitions out of the, there is a definition in the conditions of approval that the applicant, that all vehicles have to meet the definition of what a recreational vehicle is per the zoning ordinance. And that, that condition is in the conditions of approval for this. But if you'd like to compare, I can, again, I can read the mobile home.
Well, I think you've heard it well. So, trailer parks are regulated by the state to a large extent?
Yes.
RV parks aren't there?
I don't, I don't, I'm not totally sh, I don't think it's to the same extent. But I'm not positive. I don't know the answer to that, actually.
Maybe, maybe Rob knows. My understanding that mobile homes are regulated by the state department of housing, and you actually get a certificate of title to it. It's not regulated under the Motor Vehicle Code.
That is correct, Commissioner. The State of California regulates mobile home residency in a different statutory scheme that would be applicable to a recreational vehicle park as proposed here.
I think you've answered it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Melanie.
Great, thank you.
Would the applicant like to come up and?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Michael Reese with Old Woodside Construction. I'm the owner and a project proponent for the project for you today. This proposed RV resort is the third phase of the redevelopment of the total 30-acre property, which included kind of the revitalized headquarters house, which is now the Dingus McGee's, and then also the golf course, which we're trying to bring back. A lot of time and effort and funds have gone into improving the property. And this RV park resort would be the third phase of that, of that project. And as Melanie mentioned, the three main issues that seem to be of concern to the commission and the neighborhood before were the, were the three items, the length of stay, the screening, and also the saving of the trees. And I guess probably most important to me would be the length of stay. And in regard to length of stay, I pulled up the RV parks in, the others showing on the Placer County Visitors Bureau. All of those parks do not have any maximum stay requirements for, for public parks. The RV park in Roseville, though owned by the county, shows on their information sheet a 14-day stay. But in talking to, I presume it was the manager there, they allow them to keep, keep staying there. And she advised me that they do have some very long-term tenants that, that do indeed stay there. I also contacted the representative for the Good Sam Club, Henry and Ann Goldman. And for those of you that may not be RVers, the Good Sam Club is a, I guess, an organization that puts out guidelines and rates RV parks all over, I believe it's the United States. And they have, they've been around for a long time. And I talked to, talked to her, and they're, again, the representative for Northern California, and they've visited almost 400 private RV parks. And to her knowledge and the knowledge of her husband, none of those RV parks had any stay requirements. And they actually even, on their form, have a question, is there a maximum stay requirement? So, to me, the, 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 the public, you know, state-owned parks are kind of a different animal than what the privately-owned RV parks are. And in such, and I think you show, see that show up in the differences in, in the stay requirements. So, I'd really like to be able to have folks stay. If they come for a season or two, be able to stay there, whether they're visiting family, whether they're temporary workers, working for PG&E or Caltrans, some, sometimes that occurs. And I just feel nice to have that option. It's kind of tough going into a business when your main competition, the KOA, which is a less than, it was a little over two and a half miles away from you, has no maximum stay requirements. So it's just, it puts me in a difficult position if somebody wants to stay for a little bit longer to have to kick them out and send them over to my competition. I did agree to 180-day maximum stay requirement early on when staff first approached me and said that there would need to be a maximum stay requirement. So I'm okay with the 180 days. I would really prefer that to the, to the 60, and ask for your consideration in that regard. In regard to the landscaping, I think Melanie had done a good job with the exhibit. It has come to my attention that the diodoras would probably be a little bit better choice than redwoods, so that may get switched to 100% diodoras, depending upon, as long as that's okay with staff. And then, in regard to the trees, we did, as Melanie had mentioned, changed the orientation there. And I had to be a little bit careful because I didn't want to make that radius too tight because driving in an RV can get a little, you know, if you get that too much of a tight, it makes it harder to get into your spaces and such. But we were able to save quite a few trees. And, and it's, the trees are, it's a good thing for the park. It makes it a better place, it makes it more shaded, it makes it more appealing. And then also, too, that's, I guess, kind of the carrot and the stick is, quite frankly, Placer County has a, a tree ordinance, which is, it's, it's expensive for you to go to cut down trees. So it's, it's kind of a double, a double motivation there, shall we say. So I guess in summary, it's, I hope that the commission will go with 180 days. Staff has added conditions, I believe it was 53 through 57, which address, you know, no auxiliary structures, that coach has to be, or road ready, has to be registered. So I think that would, I don't think it bothered you with this morning. Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Wait, wait, another question. But item 54, is, does say 60 days, so you're not, you're not in agreement with that?
That's the only thing that I would ask consideration from the commission, that that go back to the original 180 days as proposed by staff. So that would be the only item that I would like the commission to consider a longer time period on. Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to come up and comment or question?
Good morning. My name's Evan McKinney, and I live on Woodside, 305 Woodside, behind Dingus McGee's. And I believe you guys got my copy of my evaluation of the RV parks in California yesterday, I believe. And those, it isn't hearsay, these are people that you can look up and find what they have. And I found that most public ones, because I did include state and county ones, but they were anywhere between seven and 28 days, and I think there was a 30-day one there as well. And to me, some of these were, again, some of the higher-end RV parks that I found. And I went on, did a hour, two-hour internet research and found that these ones are the public. So, you know, RV travelers, they can go onto the website and view what their requirements are. So I did find that there are maximum stays, some of them, and I also did include some comments in there on how they had to be up-kept. And basically, like people indicated, it has to be able to move out of the facility upon the completion of the maximum stay. So I did want to bring that as a record, that I did find quite a few ones out there that were under 30-days maximum stay. And I hope that if we do have an RV park by my house, that we do limit the stay because I would think that it would give the community access. Because I know you guys are looking for funds, obviously people from, I saw Ikea was in there saying that it's going to help his business by having more people in here. And again, I know my wife also sent a letter in, and her concern was our tax-paying dollars for fire mitigation, because these people aren't going to be putting in money for fire mitigation in our area. The second thing I would like to address is the screening. If someone can please provide a screening, we're in the process, like I said previously, we're in a building, or renovating a building in Sacramento. And I know for putting an air conditioning up on the unit, it cannot be seen, and they call it screened. So I would like a clear definition of what screening means. Does that mean every single RV unit out there is going to be screened? Because I have seen some information in the Placer County saying screening is defined as 80% or more of blockage of whatever you're viewing. So I would like to know, because I saw on the one presentation of the line there, mainly on Musso Road, no trees were going to be added except for after the drive-in going into the RV park. And so currently, as I drive past there this morning and every day, I can see through those trees up into the hillside. And if they're going to be flattening that hillside, I'm going to be seeing all these RV campers. So I would like to find out, when you guys are indicating that it's going to be screened, what should I expect? Because I don't want to have any false expectations saying, oh, everything's going to be fine. I'm not going to see all these RVers and all these people out there with their picnic tables having a picnic. So if I can get some clarification on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Before you sit down, I'd like to ask you some questions.
Yes.
Because I'm a little bit confused.
Sure.
I did get your email, and I read through it.
Yep.
And just like you said, first question is, we've brought up this area, issue of maximum stay, and you did too. What harm is it that we're trying to protect the public from by limiting the stay at all?
Personally, I believe by having someone stay there longer, it's not going to, I think people are going to be more apt to keep trash around the facility. They're going to want to have more transient people. And I don't think it's going to be people that are, to me, I think it's going to be, if someone wants to come there and stay there for six months, they're going to be retired people, I would imagine, people out of work, potentially people that are going to come around, and we've already had potential, you know, I've had my back window stolen out of my truck. They took the window completely out. And I'm concerned about the criminal aspect of having people come in there, park their campers, potentially, you know, set up a meth lab. And, you know, if, if they're going to be there that long, people won't be watching that vehicle very long. I mean, because they're going to say, oh, that camper's been there for a while, and they're just going to walk by it. If you're going to have a turnaround time, I would think the management of the site would happen to go walking around, you know, introduce themselves, and be more cordial and say, hey, you know, how are you doing? How long, how's your stay going to be? And then kind of move on, and that way it'd be more monitored, rather than a place just like the mobile home park down the way. It's been there forever. People kind of try to walk away from it because they don't want to pay attention to it. And that's my personal belief.
The problem that I'm having with your comment is that you're talking about mobile home parks.
Right.
Versus RV parks. You know, somebody who wants to stay there long-term, you know, these are cheap. He's going to have to pay $30, $35, maybe $40 a night, times however many nights he stays there. And of course, Mr. Reese wants to maximize the business income, and so he'll want to keep it free of trash and whatnot. But I'm not sure that I subscribe to your theory that there's a correlation between criminal activity and having an RV park, not a trailer park, but an RV park in, in your neighborhood.
Right.
That's why I'm getting hung up.
Yeah, and, and I agree, there is some grayness there. I'm just, don't want to have a person set up camp there and plan on hanging out there for six months. I don't see how that would benefit the community. And it's not going to be benefiting me, seeing all these, to me, I would think that I would rather see people turning in and out of that RV park on a faster basis. And maybe it's just some hang-up in my mind, and I've seen RV parks, you know, and, like I said in some of the comments, some of the comments say that they have to be 12 years or newer. And yeah, if we're going to guarantee and say, he's not going to allow anything older than 12 years, then yeah, I would be more acceptable to a longer stay. But if we don't, if I can't speak my opinion on, on how I see this place, you know, I would hate to see a 1960 rink-a-dink RV there for six months and have, that's a visual pollution.
Some of these motorhomes are half a million to a million dollars.
Correct. But some of them, you go to eBay, and some of them are under $1,000.
And by limiting it to 12 years or so, I'm thinking of some people I know who have taken these old Airstreams and some of the Shasta trailers from their early 50s.
Correct.
And rehabbed them. Are they prohibited from staying there?
Well, I guess we could put that in the contract, couldn't we?
Yeah. I think, I'm wondering if you're envisioning these, the trailer trash, for lack of a better word, that you see on television, where the thing is ramshackle and rundown and?
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
How do, how do we prevent that? Do you, do you think that turnover from time to time is going to, going to prevent that?
Well, again, in some of the comments that I stated, and you can go to them, they did have minimum years, and they were also required, some of them, that they had to turn in, start up their engine, you know, they had different maintenance requirements. And I didn't get into all the comments in there, and that's why I'm bringing it up now. Unfortunately, it's hearsay because I didn't give any documentation. But there, to me, it's just like going to the DMV. You have to register your vehicle. If a cop goes down, says your light's out, he's going to pull you over and say you have a fix-it ticket. What do we have here as far as making sure that these trailers that come in here, RV, RVs, are in good shape, and that they're not going to be eye pollution? I mean, we have noise ordinances. Why can't we have ordinances in regards to what this is going to be happening to the community around my house?
Okay, well, I think they're trying to do that when they say it has to be road-operable and currently licensed.
Yeah, but again, like you said, you can get a road-operable one that passes the DMV, which is a California regulation. All it needs to do is make sure it passes a smog.
Yeah. On another related subject, you talked about taxes. I'm not sure I understand the point you're making.
From my understanding is, my wife did check with the county, state, or this county tax assessor, and she said that we aren't, the RV people that are going to be there are not going to be taxed for emergency services such as fire, ambulance, police. There are, I have another friend that lives, works with the planning department in, by Yosemite, and she said, make sure we bring this up to you guys to see because this is potentially going to burden the community because for any event that goes out there, the other community members are going to have to pay for that. There's not going to be any fees incurred by the RV owners.
Doesn't the RV park owner essentially pay for all of that in the taxation of the highest and best use of the property?
I'm not sure. But I know it's just kind of like a hotel tax.
It's just because they think in terms of hotels.
Right. But the hotel tax is on the person that's going in there. When I go to a hotel, I'm paying for those fees, not the owner.
So that, that really was another issue of whether this is subject to the transient occupancy tax. And there was no clear answer to that.
Right.
It may or may not be, but I'm not sure of that. And then finally, you were talking about screening.
Correct.
You apparently live on the other side of the railroad tracks behind Dingus McGee's. And you're screening from your house or?
No, I'm saying screening from the front end. As you go down Musso Road, soon as you get off the bell, and you take a left on Musso, you know, I noticed that there was no additional plantings going to be going on that side. And so that's why I'm saying, you know, the hills, it has a drop-down, and then it goes up. And from my understanding, there's going to be some 20-foot cut-deeps in the side of the terrain to make it more usable for the spots. And so my question is, when they define screening, what am I supposed to envision? They're going to kind of, the whole park is going to be enclosed, and then there's, you know, whatever happens in the interior, happens in the interior. Because it does say specifically on page 30, it says screening, site screening from Interstate 80 and Musso Road, MMI1. And so I'm trying to figure out, what do you, how do you define screening? And like I said, I saw some. And like I said, I saw something in here that said eighty percent or more solid to whatever you're viewing interiorly. And so I'm trying to find out, is it going, am I going to be seeing all these RV trailers there or not? And again, if it's all screened, I could care less more on what the length of stay is if I don't have to see it.
My problem is that as a commissioner here, my, I have to balance the interests of the property owner with your interests as a member of our, of our county. And I'm trying to figure out, what is the harm here that we're trying to prevent by, by putting up this screening? And I take it that you don't want to see this at all when you drive down Musso Road.
Correct.
Musso Road, how long, how long is it in front of that area? Several hundred yards?
Oh, yeah. Easily.
And this would be a great burden upon you to have to see it?
Yes, and, and that's my whole thing. And, you know, I do know there's ordinances in Sacramento County for screening for, like I said, air conditionings on top of buildings. I'm assuming in Placer County, we have the same ordinances when you're on a building because you're not supposed to see that unsightly air conditioner on top of that building. And I was trying to find, like I said, I have not a clear understanding of what screening means in this, other than the planning department, once they say it's going to be screened to our understanding of what it should be. And I want a clear definition if possible.
Maybe Crystal can provide some illumination.
Thank you, Commissioner Brittonall. Yes, so this project would be required to go through design review. And we did have a screening exhibit that was, that was displayed earlier. That was just a preliminary exhibit. But as part of, of the design review process, what we would do is, the, the screening is for the site itself, to try to screen the units from the, the streets that surround that site. And what we would do throughout that process is to require a visual impact exhibit that would, that would show the screening. It could show it from different views, from different roadways. And that would be a part of that design review process that we would analyze, staff would analyze, and then, you know, decide whether or not that the screening was appropriate at that time. So that, that, those exhibits would be submitted, and the screening that is described in the staff report has to do with screening of the site, not screening specifically of each unit, but of the site itself.
In other words, the, the line along Musso Road that he's talking about?
Correct, yes.
There's some trees there now. But would it be fair to say, in answer to his question, that no matter what happens, you're probably going to be able to see it?
Well, and, and say we require them to, to plant trees along, along the roadway, which was proposed, you know, those trees will obviously take some time to grow as well. So yeah, there, there could be a, a time period where you're, you're going to see the units. But the intent there is that over time, as those trees, trees grow, that the, the site would be screened.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, but then again, I'm going to go back to my air conditioning example. When I pull a building permit, they expect upon final completion that it has been screened completely, not over a period of five to ten years for these trees to grow. You know, to me, it seems like if we're, if we're saying that it has to be screened, it needs to be screened from day one, not from ten years from today.
Now, given that we're dealing with vegetation, that's pretty tough.
Well, we could screen with something else.
The other way, look at the freeway.
And, and when the time's appropriate to, to discuss this, I don't know that, my personal feeling is, is that you want this project to be invisible. I mean, it's highway frontage property, it's, it's a commercial use. One of the reasons you want to get in front of all those cars is so they can see you and partake of your business, and if you make it invisible, you know, I mean, you don't want to camouflage it in front of the traffic that you've just paid to get yourself in front of.
You have a good point, and that will be part of our discussion. But my objective here was, I wanted to make sure I understood what he said.
Right. And, and I understand that. And that's also a part of, it was an open space right now, and now we're changing it to commercial. And so now, all this is happening.
But the open space is moving elsewhere, so you're getting a benefit there.
But is it viewable from the same driveway?
Probably.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Director Conroy. I live on Musso Road. I'd like first to respond to your question about the length of stay issue. I think from my perspective, a shorter time period is the time period that is more likely to attract a true vacationer traveler person. I believe that a longer length of stay is when you start attracting individuals who are trying to live in the most economic mode. And, you know, I know you mentioned thirty-five, forty dollars a night, when in fact, the research I've done, is that most of these places that allow for more long-term stays, they give a big cut on the rate. So we're talking more between six hundred, seven fifty a month. Well, that's less than somebody's going to pay for rent in an apartment, or rent in a trailer park. I mean, it's just a minimal amount of money.
Can I engage you in a little conversation?
Yes.
The reason that I ask this is, I have an RV, and we spent the entire summer out in Colorado, traveling around in it. And we ran into, the, the, the points you make are, are good, but they're extremes. And we've got this large group of people that are in the middle. And on our trip, we found oil workers. You know, there's a big boom in oil construction in Colorado and Utah, and the RV parks were full. And these were beautiful RVs that belonged to the oil workers who were following the work. We ran into folks who had medical issues, who lived on a farm somewhere, and they had somebody visiting a hospital like Auburn Faith. And so they would take their trailer, or their RV, into the local RV park and stay there for a month, or two, or three, while their family member was undergoing medical treatment and rehabilitation and so forth. And, you know, I mean, they're not, the trailers were not run down by any means whatsoever. Then we ran into some folks who had parents who were suffering from Alzheimer's, or needed assistance, or something to that effect. So they came, and they stayed for certainly longer than thirty days. We had this mix of people, and never once did I see what I perceive as the trailer trash syndrome of it, of it being run down. Although the point you make, may be right, that if you do have the very, very discounted rate, that it will attract people who, who otherwise would be a nuisance or an eyesore, or somebody that we don't particularly want in our community. And thus, the conditions were included in here, that the RV has to be currently registered, and it has to be operable, and, and those type things. I, I think those were trying to address that issue that you were bringing up.
Right. I mean, I did look at the definition of an RV, and the Health and Safety Code defines it as not only what most of us envision as a nice shiny coach that might cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't only include that. It includes the trailer that you pull behind your truck. It also includes a truck with a sliding camper shell. So this isn't the big, nice, you know, grandma and grandpa going on vacation, or someone renting this nice thing who's traveling. This could be a truck with a camper on the back of it for six months. I mean, personally, I think there's more risk in that than there is in a trailer park. A trailer park, at least, you have a minimum. You have a minimum that the building has to be, I think, four hundred square feet or larger. You have different requirements. This is basically someone, if, you know, it may be an extreme, but I think some of your examples were also extremes on the opposite end. And someone with a truck and a camper parked there for an indefinite amount of time, doesn't even have, you know, the only shower facilities and restroom facilities are the ones that are going to be there at the site. I mean, it's just not what I moved there for. When we moved there, I saw a golf course that was zoned open space. I see that there's small pieces of the property were zoned neighborhood commercial, set back from Musso Road. So now, it's a complete change. Not only is the, the proposal that those small pieces be moved, and, but that the zoning be changed to allow for this. It's not what I moved there for. I live on Small Lake Ridge, which I think everyone out there, that's why we moved there, to that neighborhood, because we like the privacy and the space. And we're going to give that up. I mean, right now, I think the minimum's probably about two acres at least for a single-family home. And now, you're going to have up to fifteen families per acre. That's not, it's not what we live there for. That's not what we moved there for. It's a huge difference in our whole lifestyle. It's going to affect our property values. I mean, basically, I see one property owner who's going to benefit financially from this. Yes, his land will be worth more. That's great. That is not going to have a good impact on all the rest of us. I think it's going to bring down the property values for all of us. And I can't sit quietly and watch that happen. You know, I just can't. And I, I don't see anything good coming for the neighborhood as a whole from this project. The length of stay is just such a one small piece of it. Because the bigger piece is the whole movement of those parcels. And the fact that out of that five-acre piece, some of it, the open space is going to be moved, well, where it is right now, the open space is on the frontage of Musso Road. So we're going to move the open space in between some RVs. Well, who benefits from that? That's like me building buildings around my property and calling the center of it open space. It's not, it's, you know, it just doesn't work.
Laughing with you because that's exactly what happens in these subdivisions that go in and then put in a golf course. They, they want to count that as open space, and they get away with it.
Yeah. And basically, that's what this is. I mean, calling those couple acres open space, it is just, it's ridiculous. I mean, basically, the whole five acres is going to be switched to general commercial. I mean, right now, the neighborhood commercial that is on that road, yeah, it's by a freeway, so it's expected. And the little bit that is neighborhood commercial, those are small businesses, a daycare center and things like that, that go away. I mean, they come during the day, they go away. They're not living there nonstop. You know, and I have concerns too. I tried to figure out who does have jurisdiction over this. Because the trailer park at the end of the road, Glen Oaks, is in deplorable condition. And it's my understanding that the county doesn't have that much control over it, that it is the, it's the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Well, not much is happening there. So I'm concerned that you could approve something that ultimately you have limited, may have some limited control over. And I know it's really fuzzy trying to find in the law the distinction between a trailer park and an RV park. It is really fuzzy. And even in the law, I think it's, it tends to be, you know, the terminology tends to be used differently in different places. But I did find an example of a news article from, well, it's Morgan Hill, and it was in Maple Leaf RV Park. And they had issues because the RV park, it was approved to have certain landscaping things. And what they did was change some berms, which redirected the water flow and increased flooding in the neighborhood. Well, the city sued them, and the suit was thrown out because the state, not the city, has jurisdiction over RV parks, is what I read. So I don't know. I, as hard as I tried to figure out, I almost called the, the State Department to find out, do you have control of the RV parks, or to what extent does the county or cities have control? I couldn't get a firm answer on this.
I, I see multiple commissioners looking my way. So there, there is a mix of jurisdiction. Obviously, the individual park, we need to know much more of the background facts, whether in fact was a mobile home park, which had a dual use with RVs, which is certainly possible. For the matter before the commissioners today, this is a discretionary land use permit with an associated series of entitlements that will go to the Board of Supervisors. The county's jurisdiction over this project is very clear on the land use side.
So if problems happen similar to the problems that are going on in Glen Oaks Trailer Park, then the county's going to be the one...
To the speaker, that's not actually what was just said. The key is, this is a discretionary land use entitlements before the planning commission that will ultimately end up with the Board of Supervisors. If it proceeds out of this body today, we can't speak to the individual facts that occurred in another jurisdiction.
That didn't help.
I didn't think it did.
Yeah, this is the same kind of issue I've been having as I've tried to research this. It's like, okay, I'm still not convinced that it, that it would be the county and not the state that would have control if their down-the-road were an issue with the condition of this property, or anything that happened to it.
Thank you.
And, and I think that makes it difficult. I, I would like to add, if I have one more second.
Okay.
That in, in addition to the scenic corridor being destroyed, it does affect the wildlife in the area. I mean, right now, we do have deer, we have bobcat, we have bear that come through as recently as last week. Deer in my yard this morning. I think that they move around and they're there because it is a low-density population area, with human population being low. And I think this will significantly change that. I think the, the added activity of that many people in that area is going to frighten off so much of what we live there for and what we enjoy there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Corinne Lee. I live 385 Woodside Way. I agree with everything that has been said here. I have other concerns also that I will bring up, and that is the traffic that is on Bell Road and the overpass, if you've ever been there in the afternoon with it totally solid cars across there. Or if you've ever come off the eastbound, and I've actually not been able to turn off there because the traffic is backed up that off-ramp. And it's true on the westbound also, and you can even have that happen at night. I can't imagine with an RV park there and vehicles coming and going, what we're going to experience. I, I don't see that as a safe thing at all for either eastbound or westbound. And we have kind of a courtesy stop there at, when we come off of Musso Road to get onto Bell Road. You stop and you take turns with the off-ramp, and everybody does, I know that could be mitigated with lights, but it's still, there's, there's no depth to where you can park cars. And the bigger vehicles you get, the more that traffic's going to stop back and congest everything. So I see that as a, a very large problem. And the other thing that, we've lived there over forty years, and so we have seen it. I knew the Parnells very well when they came to us and said, we're thinking of putting our restaurant up there, you know, do you think the neighborhood would like this? They were very concerned, and they, they did, I think, a beautiful job. And the restaurant still is now bringing it back from what they ran a number of years ago. And I think when you, excuse the expression, clutter it with a bunch of RVs in there, you will detract from what that icon is on the hill that is a restaurant, that is well-run, to, to maybe something you aren't going to get off the freeway to go to. I don't think it will be an attractive thing at all. I don't care how much screening you do. It is attractive now with the rolling hills and that brings to the restaurant, but I personally, I don't know if I'd go up there to eat anymore if it were just, you have to go through a maze of trailer park, or RV park.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to talk about the plan itself. Can I do that? Can I give you guys something to look at? My name's Ron Conroy. I live on Musso Road. I reviewed the plans, and I want to bring some things to your attention. First off, page twelve, section five, no grading, clearing, tree disturbance shall occur until improvement plans are approved. A great deal of grading, clearing, entry will have already been done prior to the initial project's submittal. This may have impacted raptor nesting areas to this town.
Ron, before you get going too much, Melanie, have you seen this document?
No, she has not.
Let me give you this. Kathy, would you give this to Melanie? It's more important that she follow along. I'll read off Rich's, because she's going to have to respond.
Page thirteen, section ten, no water quality facility construction shall be within any identified wetland area or flood plain. Why did this owner have a large excavator on the property that cleared out at least two ponds of all wetland vegetation and aquatic wildlife, basically sterilizing the ponds? One of the ponds is directly, directly on the proposed RV park site with the, was this to avoid wetland mitigation? I don't know. And I do have a photo of what it looks like after you've done that. Going down to the land use and planning, page sixty, ten, section two and three, Jack Parnell on August ninth, nineteen seventy-nine, conditional use permit three-three-eight stated that in a recent zoning hearing, in order to have a commercial design on this property, he had to in turn place the remainder of the property in open space. It stated that the golf course would be the open space area. Parnell negotiated commercial zoning at the back of the property, and agreed to, and agreed to open the space in the front as a visual buffer, in keeping with, maintaining the Auburn Bowman scenic corridor. Many of the neighbors in attendance felt concerned that this zoning change he requested would open the door to future commercial development. The issue here is the RV park, if at all, should be put downsized and placed in the area zone C1 as established through prior hearings and public input. This would have limited... This would have limited impact on the golf course, restaurant, and preserve the scenic corridor, minimize grading and tree removal, and additional benefit would keep the RV park as planned out of the drainage basin, which is on the fairway number eight. The mitigated negative declaration states that the trade would neither increase nor decrease either the commercial or open space zoning because the commercially designated area would remain at a total of 5.18 acres and would only overlay the portion of the recreational vehicle park that would be physically developed. This misses the point that swapping the zoning and preventing the RV park to be built as proposed results in a significant and irreversible physical impact to wildlife and a dramatic visual impact on the neighborhood as well as the scenic I-80 corridor.
Chairman Moss, can I ask that we can take just a brief break and make copies of this so that the staff members here can? He's reading from something that only one staff member has a copy of.
I have more copies.
Here's one.
Well, why don't we take five? And for other reasons than that too?
I would appreciate that.
And that'll give you a chance to actually read it before it's discussed.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we go ahead and start up again?
I got busy. Just a few more points, and then I'll move on if that wasn't enough. Page 62, 12, number one, the mitigated negative declaration states a portion of the golf course and driving range would be developed as part of the proposed project, and as a result, the driving range would be relocated. The driving range, golf course, and restaurant would not be otherwise affected by the inflammation of the proposed project and remained operational. The restaurant outdoor music venue will annoy and be a point of conflict for many RV guests. Some restaurant patrons as well will be turned off by looking down off the deck at the RV park. The tranquil beauty of looking over green pastures at the beautiful sunset will be forever impacted. A few restaurants can afford to have dissatisfied guests. And page 62, 12, number three, noise issues. Many RV enthusiasts bring off-road vehicles with them. Word would travel that the RV park's close proximity to the railroad tracks as a gateway to the Sierras, this will increase noise and safety issues for the residents. And then one last thing. I looked up on a website, it's, and you guys can look this up, Bud Searl's Consulting Group, leaders in RV park development. It stated, things such as poor terrain, noise producers, railroads, truck routes, loud music warehouses can make quality recreating development risky. Also, we have three RV parks within three miles of that area. We don't need a fourth. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Kell. I live off of Chubb Road there on Musso. And as far as I'm concerned, it'd be too crowded over that way with that there being, say, would not always take a left back onto the freeway. They'd come down to the dead end on Musso Road. It's a cul-de-sac there. They'd be turning around down there, and they'd be parking alongside of our property over there waiting to get back into the place. I oppose it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Tomlinson. I live on Hogertail Hill, just opposite of Ron. Something I haven't heard is personal and public safety. I'm sure you're aware of the bear reallocation program from Tahoe. They dropped the bears in a canyon right behind us. I personally lost several pets. I've had damage. And if we add something like this where we've got dumpsters, that's what these bears are attracted to. We're going to have a problem. I don't think it's a good idea at all, in agreeance with everything else that's been said here. That's one thing I have to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn North. I'm retired deputy sheriff from Placer County. I live at 635 Chubb Road, which is directly behind the Dingus McGee's right now. I have a few concerns regarding the time of stay, the length of stay. I'm concerned with people that, maybe this has nothing to do even with the length of stay. I'm concerned with people who don't live there traveling on foot onto my property. I live on the canyon, on the other side of the railroad tracks. It's beautiful. I don't know what insurance there is that these people that are going to be traveling through, some, who knows what kind of criminal history they may or may not have, but who knows or who's going to keep them on that property and not wandering onto our property? I've lived out there for most of my life. Many people have lived in those homes out there for most of their lives, many years, and it concerns me. I don't want people on my property. Also, regarding the noise, currently, I don't believe these people are very good neighbors to start with because it's noisy when they decide to have a party. One Wednesday night, they were having some kind of a concert, and when I called and asked them to turn it down, I was told it was a band, and they had a permit until 10:00, and they would continue playing till 10:00. It went on till 10:30. I complained to the code enforcement. Unfortunately, code enforcement doesn't work at those hours, so nobody bothers to come out. Sheriff's Department came out, but by that time, they were done. It has no, it's not good. There needs to be some kind of a sound barrier on our side of their business as well, and some kind of way to keep their business on their own property.
Lynn, do you think that the noise you're receiving is going to be increased by the presence of the RV park? Or is this a complaint generically against Dingus McGee's?
I don't know. I don't know what kind of noise that they're going to do. But I mean, if they're going to be associated with the restaurant in some way, and, you know, I mean, I don't know. A lot of parks have, they have parties or they have activities for their campers. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't know. I would hope not. But I'm concerned about the criminal activity in the area. It scares me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just had one other comment was about the septic because there is a natural groundwater, if you will, in that area, and that's why the golf course had been such an ideal thing for it. And if they have a lot of septic tanks, I want to know who monitors and make sure that it stays functioning and doesn't become a pollution factor to groundwater and everything else.
Thank you.
We all, many have wells out in that area.
Okay, if all the members of public who want to speak have had an opportunity, we'll go ahead and close that portion off and just maybe invite the applicant back up to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were a lot of items there, and if you bear with me, I'll just kind of try to go through my notes, and if there's anything that you'd like me to expand on or you feel like I've missed something, then let me know. And, okay, yeah, with the noise, as far as the noise from Dingus McGee's, that is a separate business. I own the real estate, but I do not own the Dingus McGee's business. If the permit said that they should only play until 10:00, then they should only be playing until 10:00. That's pretty black and white, and that's a very valid concern of the neighbors. And if you wish, I can certainly pass that on to my tenant and let them know that. Anything else on the noise?
Yeah, I was just kind of going back down through my notes.
Okay.
Lynn was raising the issue of people wandering up on the railroad tracks, as some others had mentioned, and safety. What's your comment about that?
You bet. In regard to the people wandering up onto their property, the majority of the neighbors live across the railroad tracks, and probably most of you know Union Pacific is considered private property. You're not supposed to be out there. Actually, I've even been told to get off there when I was just next to my property. There has historically been a problem with the Glen Oaks Mobile Home Park. Down there, people coming down the tracks, and, you know, we've had problems there on our property and experienced substantial vandalism where they came and, and we don't know for a fact they came there, but I did track them about three quarters of the way back that way, where they came and cut all the pipes underneath our restaurant and pulled all the wires out of my brand-new solar system. So, I mean, and it is a concern. But I really don't think the guests at the RV resort are going to be going onto those properties. I just don't see that as an issue. Anything else on that? As to Mr. McKinney's concern, as far as screening everything, that's, I've got to be realistic, that's not going to happen. You're still going to be able to see some of the RVs. There's a benefit both to the RVers being screened from the freeway, but as was pointed out, it definitely takes time for trees to grow. And then I know a number of the commissioners have already been out there and saw that there is a substantial amount of screening because Musso Road also sits higher than what AD does and the site does. So there's some natural screening that's afforded from that. There was a point made as far as the age requirement, and I believe Commissioner Brentonall, you mentioned, and actually, I'd made a note about Airstream trailers, and then you said it, and I kind of went, okay. So there's, it's a give and take. I don't want trailers that are coming in that are held together with duct tape. I mean, that's not, that's not my target market by any means. But I think if you try to put an age restriction, you run into the problems where the guy does have the, you know, the beautiful Airstream. And there's even groups of those trailers, RVs, whatever you want to call them, that travel together. In regard to taxes, the county assessor, that's one thing I can guarantee, when I go in and put substantial improvements in, my property taxes will go up substantially from where they are now for the improvements that I make, and that will go a long ways towards paying for impacts for county services, et cetera.
Do you have some thoughts about TOT taxes?
You know, I'm not sure on that, too. It may be that TOT's collected for some certain period upfront. I've heard that in other jurisdictions. I do not know the answer specifically in that regard.
Okay, we'll find out.
As far as the trash, I think some of you that came to the site, it's been an absolute constant battle for me, cleaning up trash on that entrance. It's, they dump couches, they dump tires, they back up their trucks. They use it for a public restroom. With the development of that property, I'm pretty confident that those issues will go away. I'll probably still get some trash from where all the trucks park, and that seems to blow over our direction, but at least we'll have somebody there all the time can keep that area cleaned up. And we get a lot of people just pulling off from the freeway that'll, that just come and hang out there, I think, and that can probably be resolved, too, which will help, I think, the general safety overall. There was a comment made, too, as far as the development areas, and county staff required me to look at the impacts in the original proposed semicircle. And actually, the analysis that was done by Andrigg, actually, and the Arbers, that would have actually, would have caused more tree removal, more grading than the proposed project. And again, as the constraints map that was put up there, we really tried to just go through the septic areas and avoid those, avoid the trees, and try to really kind of fit that project into the existing constraints that we had. The traffic concerns, there was a full-blown traffic study done, and then I know Phil France had reviewed it, and I don't think Phil's here today, but I'm not sure if you have any comments on that. But there's a full traffic study done, and all mitigations are being required. I'm being required to pay substantial mitigation fees before I am allowed to go forward. to go forward. Bears coming into the dumpsters, you know, maybe, I don't know. It is bound, they have to come across the tracks, or they'd have to come across the freeway. If we do have a problem, being familiar with, in Tahoe, I know that there's safeguards that we can do as far as closing those.
Have you had any problems with bears in the dumpster at the restaurant?
No. There was a lot of items on Mr. Conroy's. I think I've hit with some of them. As far as the drainage and such, there is a lot of clay that's on that site, and then, so when we do the project, we will, as in really any project where you're on topography, well, anything, you have, you need to be cognizant of your drainage, make sure that you get that where it needs to be, that it's not going in your septic systems, et cetera. Is there anything I missed? I was trying to take his notes as fast as I could. Ah, okay, this picture. This picture is of an existing pond, and then what we did is actually, we went through all of the ponds, every pond on that site, and cleaned them out. Because what was happening was all the cattails were growing in, and then it was basically turning into a swamp. And it was causing a lot of mosquitoes, was unsightly, and it smelled. And so what we did, and we obtained a grading permit, we went in, told the county what we're doing, went in, cleaned out everything, and then actually, on the golf course, there was some of the other stuff that we pulled out from the ponds ended up on the north end of the property that we're using for a buffer. So county was aware of it. There was a grading permit issued. There were no wetlands. That determination was made early on. So that pretty much covered it. Anything else the commissioner would like me to address?
I have a question. You say that the Dingus McGee is run by a separate person that you lease, I guess, or have a contract with. Are you planning to run this RV park, or were you running, going to lease it out to someone else to run?
It's a good question. I don't know yet. I do not have any direct experience running an RV park. I have a lot of experience, you know, driving my RV park, going to RV parks, and I've done a tremendous amount of research. So it remains yet to be seen how that's going to work.
And the length of stay, the 60 versus 180s, if this commission were to say 60-day limit, how would that affect your project?
I think it would, I think, as I mentioned earlier, it would put me at a distinct competitive disadvantage when none of the other private RV parks that I could make a determination have length of stay requirements, other than that there was one in Nevada that appeared to have one. With the KOA not, I mean, being less than two and a half miles away from me, I just hate to have my good customers that want to stay there for, say, a summer, for whatever reason, saying, you know, "Sorry, you got to leave," and head on down to the KOA. It just puts me, business is difficult enough, the price of gas, trying to move everything forward. Just, I hate to, I hate to start a business with one hand tied behind my back. Sorry, that's kind of a poor analogy.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to get a little clarification from council on the TOT tax issue. It seems like that's one way that people that come into the county and stay in hotels and on a temporary basis are able to cover the cost of the public services that go on in the county. And this would be a similar activity, and so just a question on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Placer County Code is not clear. It does not directly address the use of a temporary occupancy in an RV park such as this. It's not clear from the record whether similar facilities in Placer County are currently being charged TOT. Your commission has a few options on that point today. You could direct staff to develop further information for the components of this request that will go to the Board of Supervisors, obviously, the rezone and the community plan matter, to report to the board as part of that proceeding. You also have the authority to condition the project on the payment of TOT if you choose to do so. You can stay silent on the issue, and in that case, the Placer County Code will apply. The treasurer or tax collector will make that determination in her capacity, implementing the TOT provisions of the county code.
Okay, well, I guess the issue that comes up there is if we make it a requirement in this particular project, then we're doing the same thing as far as the disadvantage with some of the competitors. Though it seems like that is an issue before us today, and that the folks here are concerned about the public services and how people that are staying in this facility would contribute to that. And so at any rate, it sounds like there may be an opportunity for us to ask the staff to look it over, and maybe report it out to the Board of Supervisors when this comes up, as far as zoning question.
Yes, that is within your authority this morning to request staff to take that inquiry and bring it as part of their board item. And if I could, if I could add, obviously, the Board of Supervisors has the sole and exclusive authority to amend the TOT provisions of the county code, if this, in fact, is what they decide to do.
Okay. And so I guess I would ask the commission to entertain that as a motion.
Are you going to make a whole one, then, or we got, just that as an individual motion? Okay. And do we have a second?
Excuse me, commissioners. I would suggest this morning, if the commission elects to take action, that they be taken individually. If that's, I believe what I understood, this is a single motion on the TOT issue. The other motions would follow.
So do we have a second? Can you restate the motion, maybe?
Well, the motion is that we ask staff to review the TOT question on RV parks, given that there's comparable there with hotels that already do pay TOT tax, and take that as, before the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second that. Motion and second.
Let's have discussion.
Okay.
I'm not going to vote for your motion, and here's why. Rob Sandman has already told us that the county code in this regard is somewhat gray. It's not clear whether it applies or it doesn't. I don't think we need to wade into those waters as this commission. If the code applies, the tax assessor collector will make that determination and apply it to this RV park as she has, or may do, to all other similarly situated RV parks. I would just as soon remain silent and let the assessor do her job. I don't think we need to have staff waste time doing this.
Okay, so it's a gray area, so that the assessor is, at this point, we don't know which way she's leaning?
We don't know which way she's leaning, but according to our legal counsel, if you read the code, it's not precisely clear whether it applies to these situations or not. And my recommendation is leave that in that forum to get worked out as a will. I don't think we need to make a request on our staff.
Let it be a global fix as far as, instead of one project that...
Yeah, yeah, let the assessor do her job.
If we brought that forward now, then it would more or less force a global fix. As it is now, it'll remain gray, is what I'm thinking.
Is it broken?
Well, apparently, if the, as Richard mentions, if we're not collecting it, perhaps it is.
Perhaps a better way to put it in, there's a footnote in our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that we looked at the issue of TOT and were advised that it is a gray area. They may want to reexamine it at that, at that level.
If I could, commissioners, technically, it's the treasurer or tax collector, not the assessor in this instance.
Okay.
That's okay. And there are, again, many options. It's obviously a recommendation or request from the commission. There's actually no motion would be required to have staff do that. Staff could certainly do that on their own initiative, and I suspect they probably would, based on the conversation this morning. As it moves forward, it's a matter whether or not the commission wants to place an emphasis on that issue by making, by passing or voting on a specific motion on that point.
I think that's what I'm thinking. If the commission is silent on this issue, then it's not discussed, and it seems to me that this is an issue that needs to be discussed.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second? Go ahead and, I guess, do just go for a roll call vote here, since we know. Kathy?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Brentonall?
No.
Mr. Ricucci?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Two to three.
Okay, then that brings us back to the discussion of the project per se. Two halves to it. One is the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors with respect to the rezoning. Let's come back to that. The other half is our action upon the request itself, which will be final unless appealed. Is that right, Mr. Sandman?
The request for the conditional use permit, the use permit issue is in effect in abeyance pending the Board of Supervisors' action. That permit cannot go into effect without the Board of Supervisors' companion actions and their action on the environmental document. You can take a separate vote. It will essentially stand as the other items move forward to the board. Certainly, if you, depending how you voted today, either party on either side of it could also appeal that to the Board of Supervisors. But that discretionary land use entitlement cannot go into effect without the companion actions being approved by the Board of Supervisors.
I think we understand that.
But the use permit can't be even discussed at the Board of Supervisors unless the rezone goes forward. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understood that question, but apparently, Rob did.
Well, no, that the conditional use permit is applicable on the rezone.
Essentially, if your commission approves the use permit today and it's not appealed to the board, it essentially sort of stands off to the side pending the Board of Supervisors' action on those entitlements which are exclusive to the Board of Supervisors, the rezone and the community plan matter. If the board approves that, then essentially, that use permit approval becomes in effect. If the board does not approve the companion Board of Supervisors' actions, then there's no legal basis for the use permit to proceed.
Okay, so we had some interesting discussions here today. Mr. McKinney, I appreciate your dialogue with me, because it gives me some insight into the, into the concerns that our neighbors have regarding this particular RV park. And I think they have a vision of an RV park where the cat lady from The Simpsons is living in a broken-down trailer and committing crimes and all kinds of mischief. And that's not the way I envision this. As I mentioned, there are other requirements that the RV parks fulfill. In addition to bringing business to this area, there are people who follow work. I'm specifically thinking of the construction of Interstate 80, which occurs every year, and has seasonal work that will be over before the winter snows fly. People with medical conditions, aging parents, people just visiting the area to see the attributes of the gold country, and people passing through. So you get a whole selection of folks who might have occasion to come to the RV park. Some of them are in their million-dollar motorhomes, some of them in their $500,000 motorhomes, some of them in trailers, and some of them in truck campers. And as you were mentioning the truck camper thing, I couldn't help but laugh. A good friend of mine, who's deputy sheriff in Sacramento County, has a truck camper, and he loves to go camping in that thing. But, you know, he's not that kind of person. So, you know, we want to encourage them as well. And so the county came up with the idea, well, every now and then, in addition to requiring them to keep their RVs currently registered and operable, we'll require them to uproot, pull out for some period of time, and then to have to come back. And maybe that's a, that's a good solution to this thing, because it ensures that the RVs are, in fact, operable, that they are transient, and so forth. So now we come down to the issue of how long. 60 days, which was proposed in condition number 53 in our staff report. And I would suggest to you that 60 days is too short. I would be more inclined to go with a period of time like the 180, 80 days. Now, when you leave, you have to be gone for a period of time. I don't want somebody to take their broken-down trailer, drag it out to the street, leave it there overnight, and drag it back in, and say, "Well, I met the condition because I was gone." No, it should be gone for a week, or 10 days, or something like that. Yeah, actually, I have to leave. But I think there's something to be said for having a longer period of time between the move in and move out.
And, Prince, I agree with you. I also don't want to put the county in a position of an impossibility to monitor and enforce, you know, where you gone six days, where you gone seven days. I'd almost rather establish a block of time in a 12-month period that they could be there and stick, I mean, you know, where you can literally just pull the contract and look, this one was written on this day, and he's not been here long enough. He can stay. But I don't, it's going to be an impossible to monitor and enforce if we try to get too, too creative with how to do this. It needs to be enforceable as well as...
Well, of course, you know, this is only going to be, quote, "enforced upon complaint." Because as everybody out here knows, all the enforcement of things like this is complaint-driven as a rule. And so then the county will come in and code enforcement try to determine how long they've been here, or whether they're complying with this or not. And in the various lists that were given to us of the length of stay in various RV parks, you'll notice that the state does tend to have a rather short limit. And that's because, in my humble opinion, they're not trying to prevent a harm similar to what we have here. Their problem is there's so much demand for these spots that, like Pismo Beach, good luck getting in down there. You can call a year in advance, and they're booked. So they want to give a turnover so that other folks have an opportunity to come in. The private parks, no. That's why there's, as a rule, no particular limitation unless it's been imposed by some jurisdiction. So you got a good idea. Maybe not, can only say a maximum of so many days, but within a 12-month period, there's a limit like that. Maybe it is easier to monitor that way.
I would think that, I mean, that would be certainly easier for the county to monitor. I got to think it would be easier for the neighbors to monitor, too. Whether, did he leave? Was he gone for a week? You know, I mean, if they're truly going to watch it and have concerns...
Or is it driving down Musso Road? That piece of junk still here?
Well, again, I think it needs to be something that those who have a concern about can monitor from both sides.
How would you phrase it?
That I don't know. I mean, that's, I'm hoping for some discussion here to help with that.
Let me see, I guess I'm a little bit, so we're talking about 60 or 180 days, which is specific, and, and seven days gone before you come back?
Well, the original condition now, I believe, is 60 days, and then you can leave for seven and come back, correct?
That's right.
The condition says.
Okay, and I think what my discussion was, is let's set a maximum period of time and forget the leave and come back, leave and come back, because in a business environment, if his customers, if his tenants leave and go to the KOA camp down the road, and they have no limit to stay there, then they're just going to stay there forever. They're not coming back. So in a sense, we're capping his, his ability on doing business with the limited number of people there are to, to use these services. Would rather, but I have concerns that, about permanent residency, which is why I'd like to see some sort of cap on the days. But I think it needs to be long enough that we're, we're not starting him out at a disadvantage, and we're not creating a system that's impossible to monitor.
Of course, he does have a competitive advantage, and that is his location.
Yeah, one of the reasons, one of the reasons that the last meeting we discussed for this location was that it was highway-oriented, and it was meant to be, as the staff report here says, short-term accommodation for park guests. Well, 180 days is not short, in my opinion. I understand the business about competitiveness and what have you, but if we're meant to provide RV spaces for the motoring public and not permanent residency, then we better make sure that the length of stay is commensurate with that idea. If we don't think that's important, because we discussed, we spent the whole time last time discussing, you know, a trailer park versus a RV park, and then we need to make that distinction in our, in our recommendation. If not, then it'll become a trailer park. I mean, regardless of the who controls the wheels and who does the taxation, it'll become a trailer park, which is okay, I guess, if that's what we want, permanent residency on Highway 80, which I didn't, I didn't think that's what we were discussing last month. But that's my concern.
I agree, that I think there needs to be something on there that prevents it from being permanent residency. The question is, is what's the magic number?
Well, I think...
I don't know.
Well, I'm going to suggest 90 days as a compromise between the two, and that's what I would vote on.
And is this in the form of a motion, or?
No, well, no.
Form as discussion before.
Okay.
Let me see, on the, on the seven days begun, if, I'm not seeing where that necessarily adds an advantage, you know? If somebody wants to come back, they had a good time at this park, and they want to go over and stay at KOA, KOA for seven days and come back because this is a facility they like, then they can do that. The seven days implies to me that they have to stay mobile, and when their 180 days is over, they have to leave. You know, I guess I think about the number of days question, and... You know, I guess I think about the number of days question, and, you know, it's hard to come up with any kind of a right answer on that. You know, I did hear Jerry talking about a lot of reasons why some people would want to stay here over sixty days, and those are family reasons and a lot of other reasons, not just people that are on vacations. And so, at any rate, I guess what has come on the floor from staff is 180 days.
Yeah, sixty is what staff is proposing.
Well, that was a suggestion from our last planning commission.
Yeah, but it's in the requirements now.
Okay, so let me go back to our last planning commission, or commission meeting. At that one, we were considering 180 days.
Well, evidently, we must have discussed it as sixty because our staff wouldn't have put it in there in the...
We did discuss it, but we didn't really take a motion on it, we continued it. And so I guess what I'm saying is, staff originally came up with 180 days, and I really personally don't have any other better answer for that than what staff originally came up with, and so that's where I'm at.
What is the harm that we're seeking to avoid? That's the question I asked Mr. McKenna. He gave us some pretty good answers. And I think if I was able to say what it is, we don't want people moving in and staying there for an extended period of time with the attributes that go along with that kind of thing, building, little buildings on the outside, the skirts on the bottom of the trailer, and clotheslines, and so forth. And by requiring them to uproot at some periodic interval, it requires them to remove all of that supplemental material. Now, we can argue about how often that ought to be, but I think that's the process that will prevent that kind of activity. We've also put in here that they can't have outside structures and building improvements and things like that. That also will help. Also, the fact that their, that the RVs have to be currently registered in some state, not necessarily California, but current, and operable. You know, and that's easy to enforce, start it up, or hook it up to your car and show me that flat tire won't impede your ability to move. I think the mere process of all of this disruption is sufficient to protect what we see as a public interest in all of this. And now we're just arguing about the interval.
And with regards to the length of stay, I don't know that moving the red motorhome out and then parking a blue one in there is going to lessen the impacts to the neighbors versus the blue one just staying there for more time. You have a space, the intent is to keep it full as much as possible. I don't know, to a certain extent, at what point the neighbors are more negatively impacted because one stays there a little longer versus rotate, either way, there's still an RV in that spot. And, you know, like I say, so my concern is that something's in place that they don't become permanent. But other than that, I don't know that we're doing the neighbors a huge service by restricting that one's got to come and go, or shorten the stay to where we're just trading. In fact, it probably ups the odds of potential problems because you're rotating more people through there, the odds you're going to get a clinker are probably greater.
Well, you know, I suppose we could deny the project in its totality and eliminate all of this. Some of them would be delighted with that. But in my opinion, this is the perfect place for an RV spot, right at a major freeway intersection. It's ideal, so I'm with you. Just so long as this happens periodically, then that will be sufficient to protect the neighbors and the county from any of the perceived deals with an installation.
Well, to answer your comment about the idea of the objective to keep the spots filled is not the objective. Our objective is to make sure that the impact of this doesn't affect the neighbors any more than it may, and part of that is by moving people in and out, it keeps exactly the problem that Jerry was referring to as becoming a permanent spot for people to stay. So if the red does shift with the blue, it's exactly what we want to happen so that the fences and the garbage and anything else that might be considered a permanent residence doesn't develop. So I'm more in favor of limiting the stay to ninety days and having them move out and move back because if, that's exactly what we're using to keep this from happening.
You know, let me go back and, a couple of things I heard, and I agree with this too, is that, you know, there could be a railroad project that's going to last more than ninety days, and, you know, I mean, somebody could use it for that purpose, too. It's not just for recreation vehicles, and so to provide for that...
Right, well, I mean, if you go park in a parking place that says overnight parking, that means it's overnight parking, but I'd like to stay there longer. But the law says it's an arbitrary decision by somebody that you only get 24 hours here. So indeed, yeah, there's no magic number, but we've got to come up with something that helps move people in and out in a way that protects the rest of the neighbors, is all I'm thinking.
Well, six months is what I think we're discussing. I know we came up with sixty days as a suggestion in our last meeting, but I guess, you know, if there's a railroad project, or somebody has a trailer and they need five months, then, you know, that's fine, but, you know, I go back again, you know, I think, I'm not seeing the problem with 180 days.
Let me test the water here and see where we're coming down as a commission. And to do that, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that on condition number 54, which currently limits the maximum stay to sixty days, that we change that to 180 days. One second.
Discussion here, I guess?
Of course.
The sixty days and then, or the 180, and then have them be able to leave and come back in seven days?
Leave the seven, leave the seven days the way it is.
Leave the seven days the way it is.
It's the disruption that's going to protect this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're gonna probably need a roll call.
Roll call, well, opposed?
Opposed.
Kathy, please.
Aye.
Yes?
No.
No.
Yes.
Okay, so that puts that issue to bed. One of the issues that was discussed last time, and I did watch the movie, for lack of a better word, of this meeting, was trees, mitigation of trees. Larry had suggested that they move the road. I went out to the site, and I see that as a practical matter. They're so constrained that it's going to be very difficult to save any more trees than they are, so I don't see that as being an issue at all. Any other discussion on that? Okay, what about the issue of the recommendation to the Board regarding the commercial property? The way I look at it is this, it's like a checkerboard. You've got sixty-four squares on a checkerboard square, half of which are red, half of which are black. No matter where you move them around on the board, you still have sixty-four squares, thirty-two of which are black and thirty-two of which are red. I don't, I see this as kind of a neutral game, a zero-sum movement of the pieces. And one of the, I think, maybe, then, Mr. Conroy was talking about the discussions that preceded this hearing, thirty-something years ago, Headquarters House was first proposed. Oh, I wasn't here for those, but it's been thirty-something years, and conditions change, and we have to look at it in the light of today's conditions, not necessarily what happened back then. And I see the conditions imposed on the community as being exactly the same. The golf course will still be there, the open space between the RV spots will be there. It's, I think it's a great idea.
Well, at least my observation, too, was the bulk of the development is going to still be on the backside of the property, or in the middle, and there's a considerable amount of open space is still on the front part of the property.
Is any more discussion? If not, I'll make a motion. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make two motions. The first one is that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve the conditional use permit for the Headquarters RV Park, subject to the findings, both sequela and otherwise, contained in our staff report, and the conditions of approval as attached thereto with number 54 having been previously modified from sixty days to 180 days.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. We go right to a roll call?
Might as well.
Kathy, please.
Aye.
Yes?
No.
No.
Yes.
Now, do you want to read the appeal rights at this point?
Mr., no. Well, do we have the additional companion matters for the Board of Supervisors? Were you planning on making a separate motion on that, Mr. Britton?
I was.
Okay.
But I wanted to make the record clear that this is appealable.
Yes, it is.
And in order to make the record clear to those who have standing to do so, it might be appropriate to read the rights at this point.
Yes, that's fine.
And anybody who would like to appeal this decision can do so within ten calendar days by paying a fee of $529 with the county and filing the appeal.
And, Mr. Chairman, as my second motion, I would move that we forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval of an amendment to the Auburn-Bommer Community Plan as depicted in Attachment F to our staff report, and the rezone as depicted in Attachment D, based on the findings and recommended, recommended conditions of, ah, strike, the conditions of approval have to do with the first motion, just based upon the findings in our staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Kathy.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
That doesn't need to be appealed because it's going there anyway.
All right, and that just brings us now to our 10:30 item, or 10:20 item?
Kathy, do you have one of these for the record?
Actually, Commissioner, if you mind if we take five? Roy? We're going to take five. Okay. Thank you. My teeth are flapping.
It's good time.
Back. And we are now on the conditional use permit extension for Rainbow Holding Company.
Thank you, Chairman Moss. My name is Roy Schaefer, the project planner. This is a request for a one-year extension of time for a conditional use permit that was approved in two thousand eight for the Rainbow Holding Company bulk water sale operation. And the project site is located adjacent to Rainbow Lodge at five hundred eighty Hampshire Rocks Road in the Soda Springs area. And the original permit was approved in two thousand and eight, and it was for the commercial extraction, collection, storage, and transport of spring water from a natural spring located on the subject property. And this site plan shows the four tanks here, four ten-thousand gallon tanks, they were subject to a building permit requirement to exercise the permit. And it became an issue when the receiver, who was involved with this property at this point, could not engineer the tanks to get the building permit. So they're going to change these tanks to two five-thousand gallon tanks and put them on a concrete pad, and they've already submitted a building permit. So as a result of the expiry date expiration of the permit, expired July twenty-fourth of this year, two thousand twelve, it got an automatic two-year extension. They needed to ask for this one-year extension of time. And a couple of other things with this permit. We met, we had a DRC meeting, we met with the general manager, and we had online the receiver, agent for the receiver in San Diego. And their intent with this property, the receiver...
What's a receiver? You mean like receiver and bankruptcy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And their intent is to comply with all the conditions of the permit, and the outstanding condition was to get a building permit. And then, when that is take, after that, they're, they're not in the business of owning properties, they would find a new owner for this property. The second issue was that it was, this request was reviewed by the Donner Summit MAC meeting, at their last meeting, and they voted unanimously to approve the request, or recommend approval, to the planning commission. And then, I did get a phone call from Bill Roland, who is listed as the chair for the twenty-four cabin owners, and this was an issue in the past, at two thousand seven, two thousand eight, on their water issues. And I discussed what, what was going on, what the request was, and then we also sent Bill Roland the staff report. And just to follow up on that issue, up in this area, higher elevation, approximately two-hundred feet higher elevation, are four tanks, storage water tanks, and three of those are for the cabin owners, the twenty-four cabin owners for water for their use, and then the one is for the Rainbow Lodge use. And at the time of two thousand seven, two thousand eight, there was a agreement signed that provided approximately fifteen thousand gallons per day for the cabin owners ahead of this extraction and the sixty-seven thousand gallons and ten trucks per day allowed with this conditional use permit. And currently, to my knowledge, the only water sales now is to Tigart for the I-eighty road construction, for the eleven miles of construction at this present time. So we're recommending approval of the one-year extension time to the planning commission. And if there's any questions?
Maybe you could, we could go back to the cabin owners. You said five thousand gallons per day to the cabin owners, is that from the particular tanks that we're talking about, or is this from their tanks?
No, it's actually approximately fifteen thousand gallons per day that they were provided, and their storage tanks with the separate lines are from these three tanks here, three five-thousand gallon tanks, and then there's another five-thousand gallon tank that goes to the lodge, and that's not part of the commercial extraction of water. The storage tanks for the commercial extraction are these four ten-thousand gallon tanks, and so that's where a building permit was required. They were put in originally without a building permit, and that had to be exercised prior to the expiration date of the, of the permit.
So the cabin owners' extraction system is on the same property?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a long history, I think I've seen a date of even nineteen thirty-nine, when this first began. So the cabin owners are getting water from the top storage, and then the springs, whoops, sorry. The spring and borehole are higher up elevation that provides the water that comes down into these storage tanks. So it is a separate system for the twenty-four cabin owners. No, no.
And there's no conflict, is what you're saying?
There was a, there was originally with the permit, they were concerned about getting their water, I guess you could say, first, and they had some issues with the previous property owner. But that is not part of this CUP commercial extraction.
Commissioner Johnson, if I might just add, it's my understanding that there had been some previous issues related to the initial permit about water rights, and those were settled through litigation, and that issue is, is null and void at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions?
Looks like we're, we're good so far, Roy, thank you. Is there somebody from the applicant?
Good morning, my name is David Aki, I am the manager for Rainbow Holding and working for Douglas Wilson Receiver Ship. Uh, thank you, Roy, I just want to make clear that the, the springs that actually feed the residence is a separate system and not connected to the tanks in question. The tanks in question, that water source is coming from a borehole. And just reiterating what's already in the document, the driver of this extension was as we were going through the, the agreement with Tiger to use that water for Interstate Eighty, there was a condition that we exercise a building permit for these tanks that were installed in the late eighties. So by doing our diligence and going through, we, at that time, started to do some investigating, and we could not receive the engineering to get these tanks in compliance. So through that, and looking at what the use and the need was, to decrease these tanks to two tanks. And therefore, with the shortness of the season and where we are today, we can't get this project completed, so requesting the extension in time. Any questions from you?
Just, so you do have plans to proceed with the building of the tanks at the beginning of next year, in springtime or something like that, has switched the, the plan?
That is, that is the intention, yes, and the, the application has been submitted a few months ago.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and looks like we have people who want to speak about this also? No? Being none. Okay, back to the commission?
Well, if there's no discussion, I'll make a, a motion that the planning commission find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, and we approve the one-year extension of time for the Rainbow Holding Company bulk water sale, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in our staff report.
Second. Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Carries. Now to the temporary conditional use permit, Creekside Cooperative Charter School.
Wrong direction. There we go.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm Alex Fish, and I am substituting for Alan Bruch today, could not be here to provide the details of this conditional use permit request to you all. Creekside Cooperative Charter School is requesting approval of a temporary conditional use permit in order to allow the operation of a kindergarten through twelfth-grade school with maximum of hundred, hundred and thirty-two students and nine staff. This facility would be located at the former site of the county development services offices in Lake Tahoe at five sixty-five West Lake Boulevard, should be this building right here, if I'm not mistaken. I'm gonna give you just a, a brief background on the, on the facilities and the school, and a quick overview of the existing site improvements and the request, and we'll move this along fairly quickly. The school was founded approximately ten years ago, is a public charter school, serving students within the Tahoe and Truckee area, there's a little closer view of it, and it's a, a non-classroom-based public charter school. It operates four days a week between eight-thirty a.m. and two-thirty p.m., and is currently in the process of expanding its education curriculum from K-through-eight school to include also grades nine through twelve. The applicant is seeking this facility, which is a bit larger than their current location, where they house seventy-five students, I actually believe their enrollment this year is a hundred and three, they're outgrowing their current facilities, and this facility provides a little bit more elbow room and growing space for their increasing enrollment. Notably, in this request, some unique attributes under the current community plan, plan area statement for the Tahoe City Community Plan, elementary schools and high schools are not allowed use, this is a special planning area, it generally falls in the realm of like a mixed-use commercial, so you have a mix of retail offices, restaurants, and personal services, like a gymnasium, stuff like that, that's allowed. The applicant is proposing to establish the school as a temporary use and subsequently would seek an amendment to the Tahoe City Community Plan in order to add the school use as an allowance. Approval of the temporary conditional use permit is requested for a one-year period, it's technically a little bit shorter than that, but it would run to July first of this following calendar year, two thousand thirteen, after which they would have the potential to seek a one-year extension, which would allow the, the school to operate while they are in the process of, of seeking that community plan amendment. Minor improvements to this building would be required in order to facilitate, in order to permit the facility for an education-type occupancy, and generally what that would require is some access improvements, panic bars on the door, proper exiting signage, maybe some upgrades to the sprinkler system, ADA compliance, and then there are some minor parking lot improvements that I'll explain in a moment. The project site does consist of two parcels here, you'll see the existing building here, our parking lot out on the frontage of Highway eighty-nine, and then mostly, the site is undeveloped. It is developed with this fifty-four-hundred-square-foot building here, the site is accessed from a shared private driveway to State Route eighty-nine that does serve this adjacent business here. And the applicant has provided the county staff with a traffic evaluation, which took a look at, at, you know, the, the existing characteristics of the site access, its parking circulation, and made an analysis of the adequacy of that to, to serve the school needs. There's about thirty parking spaces on-site presently, they're proposing to restripe the north end of that parking lot, show you, slide a little further up here, to include a traffic circle, and then we would have about twenty-four spaces that would result here. And this would allow parents during drop-off and pickup to come in, circulate around here, drop off children, students come back out, exit back out into the state right-of-way. This would be an interim measure only, it is required to be implemented prior to the operation of the school, should your commission determine to approve the temporary conditional use permit. And the effect of it is to potentially eliminate or, or reduce, to the maximum extent possible, any potential queuing out into the state's right-of-way during those drop-off and pickup times. I should mention, if in the future the planning commission decides to allow the use to continue with an extension of time or as a permanent use, staff will be recommending that a second driveway encroachment to State Route eighty-nine is constructed. Condition four in your packet speaks to that requirement, I just wanted to point that out, that was something that Mr. Bruch had, had wanted to make clear to the commission. With that, we did take this item to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council as an action item on September thirteenth, after a short discussion of the project, the NITRAC voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project to your commission. We did also recently, just the last few days, receive a single written correspondence on the project, which was submitted by Caltrans, I had that forwarded to you yesterday. And in short, that letter advises the county of some ongoing construction projects that the, the state will have on Highway eighty-nine in front of the school, and also lists a number of suggestions for how they would like the site access and circulation handled. With that, the Development Review Committee is recommending that the commission approve the temporary conditional use permit request, findings for a Class One categorical exemption from SEQA, as well as for the use permit are included in your packet, there are also attached conditions for your consideration. And before I let you all have your say in, in the matter, I want to let you know that Camille Taylor, the school's administrator is here, she can answer any questions you may have about the particulars. And I also have Vince, I'll have to check, thank you, Vince, who is also here to answer some questions about the school, and provide you a little supplemental information if you need it.
Questions?
Before you sit down, let's go discuss condition number four. How long is this temporary use permit good for?
It runs, let's say we had it approved today, it would be good for approximately ten-and-a-half months, ten months. It would run in compliance with condition fifteen to July first, two thousand thirteen. And up to that point, they could seek an extension, it is the county's hope and, and desire to also have them in, in that period, making the necessary steps to seek that community plan amendment as well, and proceed with that.
Okay, I was just looking at condition number four, and you were talking about the additional encroachment onto State Route eighty-nine, and I was looking at the fall two thousand thirteen school year. It's typically been my approach to these things, in the very first sentence you say, "Any extension of time approved of this project will include a condition of approval." I like to change that to "may," it gives us options. You know, it doesn't require us...
Mr. Britton, all which?
Things may change, who knows?
Which condition are we on? We're on four?
Four.
Okay.
Yeah, I think your intent here is to alert them that if they go forward, they may have this condition, and, you know, who knows what'll happen tomorrow, so this gives us that option.
And that's, that's that last sentence, the construction and the encroachment may be required. Excuse, where are we?
No, the very first one. One, two, three?
Ah, there we go, thank you.
Yeah, and if it is, then the, the encroachment permit will be required, the, the last sentence is still correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is the, the one-year time limit, is that to, I mean, is that in, to ensure that there's an application filed for a community plan amendment after that, or?
I'll presume to speak on behalf of Mr. Bruch in this matter, knowing what he would likely want to say about it. Typically, a condition, a temporary conditional use permit, you have the, the flexibility to approve it in twelve-month increments up to two years, right? That's the maximum allowance. In this instance, because there is a desire to permanently establish the use, we want to make sure that we, we provide a, a slightly compressed timeframe to, to make sure that the matter is fresh in the applicant's mind, they need to commit their resources, their energies, towards moving the project forward. And that's pretty typical.
I, as, just as a question, would it be within our prerogative to make this a, a two-year permit to start with, providing that within that twelve-month period, they get the application rolling?
That would be within the, that's certainly permissible under the ordinance, absolutely.
Excuse me, Mr. Moss, actually, the, the ordinance calls for a one-year, so I believe that the commission would only have the authority to approve it for one year, and then it would have to come back for a subsequent extension.
Okay, thank you. Try. Any other? All right, thank you, Alex. Would the applicant like to come up and speak, please?
Crystal, while she's coming up, can you explain what you just said again?
Um, yes, the, um, under the, the ordinance, the temporary uses, if you're allowing a temporary use permit for use that's not otherwise allowed on-site, you can only authorize that use for one year, for temporary, they'd have to come in for an extension of time for any subsequent years following that first year. So that's just based upon the ordinance, in terms of, of your level of, you know, authority.
So we don't have authority to make this a two-year temporary use permit, even though somewhere else there's an ordinance that says we can?
No, you, you could approve it for up to one year now, and then if they wanted to come in for a second year, there would need to be a subsequent approval for that extension. So, so they, they, you can only approve it for one year at this point, should they want to go, go into a second year, it would require them to come back in for an extension of approval that would be heard before you...
I understand what you're saying, I'm just having a hard time reconciling this with the idea that you can grant a temporary use permit for two years, but apparently in one-year increments, two-year max? Apparently I got that right?
I may have misspoken, so I'm checking my ordinance as we speak, Ms....
You have no monopoly on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Camille Taylor, I'm the director at Creekside Cooperative Charter School, and I'm here to just give you a little bit of insight in our program. We have operated as a small but modestly growing school for over a decade now. I, I do want to correct one part of the commission report that is inaccurate, we are a K-eight program, not a K-twelve program, our charter that is authorized by the Newcastle Elementary School District is for a K-through-eight program. And while we are growing into capacity at K-eight, at this time, we don't know, don't have any plans to go into the high school arena. So we, we've been successful, we are, we feel like we have moved a lot for a, a elementary school, public elementary school program, and the reason that we're bringing this to you is that we've done some research, and we are very much looking forward to finding a permanent home, it'll lend stability to our program, allow us to create the environment for education that we feel matches our education philosophy and our mission of the school. We have existed in the community for a long time and have recently brought permanent residents up into the Tahoe City area because the advantages and the high quality of education that we are able to offer our students, and so we have a number of new families coming into the community, coming into our school, we feel like that is a benefit to the community and that is experiencing an overall decline in, in school enrollment and, and, and permanent residency. So we feel like we're good neighbors, we have every intention of continuing to be good neighbors in this new location. I gave you a binder that reflects some community support for our program from among our student body, our families, and then out, business owners in the community, too. So we have, we've done a lot of research, put it out to a lot of entities, asking for their feedback, asking for their concerns, trying to anticipate what the community as a whole wants us to be in terms of being good neighbors and... a whole wants us to be in terms of being good neighbors and an asset to the community. And we've listened to what they've said and taken that into consideration as we develop our plans. So thank you for the opportunity to present this today and for your consideration. I do want to bring Vince up. He is the chairperson of our school board, our governance council, and he has been spearheading the research for a permanent facility for Creekside and has a couple of things to add.
Before you go.
Yes.
You're intending to stay there permanent if you can. Is that what I'm taking to understand here?
Our intent is to purchase the property and to grow into it, but that it will cover the full capacity of our school. We don't intend to grow by leaps and bounds.
And you heard the discussion we had a minute ago about one-year, two-year use permits. I noticed that yours expires in nine months. Is that enough time for you to get this ball rolling as you see it?
I certainly wouldn't be dismayed if you extended that to a 12-month permit. That was something that Mr. Bruch put in there as a condition. We can live within that, but having 12 months certainly would allow for the flexibility that you said. We can never tell what's going to happen. I understand his rationale. We're willing to work with the planning department. They've been very, very helpful in our project so far. But if we could have that 12 months, that would be my preference.
Everybody has constraints and to the extent we can help you that way, it's nice to be able to do that.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Hi, my name's Vince Lozenkowski. I'm a parent of two Creekside students and a member of the board and an overworked parent volunteer. Just on that last topic, my conversation with Mr. Bruch was that he wanted the term to coincide with our school year. Obviously, more time is better for us. But it is our intention, hopefully upon receiving your approval today, that we proceed with the application for actual change of use. So I am told that 18 months would be a great result in obtaining that change of use. 24 to 30 months would be a more realistic outlook to actually receive the change of use for that. So that's a little detail in my conversation with Mr. Bruch. I wanted to give you quickly a little bit of flavor for what's been going on at the school. I joined the board about two and a half years ago. We quickly learned that for a school to actually make it in this environment, you really need to be over 100 students. We were at about 60 at that point in time. So our goal is to grow modestly over 100 students. That gives us the financial wherewithal to actually exist and not, we actually bring in enough cash to pay for ourselves. And in an era when the state continues to reduce every year how much a school gets, it gets pretty challenging. So we started the effort to try to find a new home at that point in time. And this effort has been going on for 24 months. I've had three separate conversations with Tahoe Truckee Unified School District, TTUSD, about sharing any of the facilities that they have because their enrollment is shrinking. Tahoe City PUD operates a community center in one of the old schools. We've had two different conversations with them about some way to cohabitate. And this actually is the third building that we have been in discussions regarding a purchase thereof. Any place that is actually zoned for a school in Tahoe City has a series of buildings that are old, unsuitable, and would require the construction of a new building, we've looked at that. We've looked at portables, temporaries. We've got a snowload issue. There's absolutely no way that we can actually get a portable or a temporary or any other solution short of new construction. It's going to be about the same cost. So we've been going around and around and around. The owner of this particular building, we actually had a conversation with 18 months ago, his financial expectations at that point in time were entirely different. He has now understood kind of what the commercial situation is in Tahoe City. And he has been absolutely fantastic in putting a deal together whereby this school can actually purchase the building at a significant discount. It brings some tax advantages to him. It's a real, real win solution, win-win solution. So, you know, we've got this opportunity. There's no other place where we can put the school. And this is hopefully our last home. And hopefully, once we get this done, I can retire from the board and not spend so much time on this. I do also want to talk one briefly about the community asset. This is a major asset to the North Shore and West Shore communities. There are four school options in the area, two of which are private and financially unobtainable for the majority of folks. Our population, we're somewhere between 25 and 30% that qualify for free lunch, which means they're economically challenged. So we provide phenomenal educations. Camille and her staff have done an unbelievable job of delivering results on a shoestring budget. Our last API scores were 951, 951, which I believe puts us roughly in the top 5% of California schools, or roughly thereabout. Literally, on the drive over the hill today, I received a call from a friend who currently lives in San Francisco, just had his second child, and is actually considering moving up. And he doesn't know I'm on the school board. He just knows I have kids up in Tahoe. And he said, "My wife would consider it. She's really scared about what the school situation is up there." And this is what the situation is. Tahoe Truckee, they're doing a great job, but they're challenged. And I'd like to think that we are an option that is providing phenomenal education for these kids. It is a public school. We are serving the entire community. And we do have several folks that have moved up from the bay just because they found us and found us to be an educational opportunity that actually does provide quality education. That's my little speech. Any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak? No?
Yeah, my name's Mark Gogoluski and I'm the poster child of what Vince was just talking about. So I was lucky enough that approximately two years ago, my business partner and I sold our company after building it for 15 years. And I was completely stressed out. My wife and I talked a lot about where we wanted to live and exactly that concern. We wanted to be in Tahoe, but we wanted to make sure our kids would get a quality education that we would be deeply involved in. And we found Creekside and that's what gave us the ability to move to Tahoe City.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, see none? Back to the commission.
I'll have a question to staff for Crystal and Alex. During our discussion, I was looking at the expiration of the temporary use permit and I, you heard me comment that it was nine months or so out. My inclination is to suggest to the commission that we change that to the full year. Is there some, you know, the law of unintended consequences? Is there something I'm overlooking here that would be an argument against doing that?
There's nothing in the code that would prohibit you from doing that. So I think the, it's my understanding that the reason that date was picked, as mentioned earlier, had to do with the ending school year. So the idea here is that come October next year, these students would presumably still be in session. And so should your committee not provide them with an extension, then we would have, you know, a potential conflict at hand. But no, you, by the code, you can certainly change that condition to today's date.
I'm also thinking in terms of as a practical matter, they know what they have to do and they know that they have their summer break and so forth. So they'll be under the gun even with an October expiration. So, you know, the theory that if something can go wrong, it will. Who knows what traps will lay on the process of trying to get the permanent one done? So this gives them a little breathing room. I just want to make sure that wasn't some reason I was overlooking, not necessarily statutory, but practical. And you raised the only thing that I could think of. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion. I would move that, the commission, mark time for a second while I turn a page. Approve the temporary conditional use permit to allow the Creekside Cooperative Charter School to occupy the site, subject to the findings and conditions in our staff report, with the following conditions changed. Paragraph number four of the conditions to change the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ninth word in from the word "will" to "may." And on the last item, 15, to make the expiration on October 10th, to make one year from today. Today's the 11th, so one year is the 10th, right? Of 2013.
And you're going to drop the part about before the beginning of the school year?
Oh, where is that?
On 15.
Yeah, strike the parenthetical expiration at the end of that sentence. Just make it a date certain.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries. Oh, anybody wishing to appeal this, I guess? May do so for paying $529. Other than that, meeting adjourned.